Who's uh doing the curbs, the states? Uh Torrance?
Yeah.
State project?
If I may ask, why'd you guys start the meetings at one instead of later? I couldn't make it out on Monday because of that.
Because we can make it? We have enough of us that are retired, we could do it during the day.
But what about the rest of us?
All we're required to do is just make a public knowledge, public notice that the meeting is not hidden, they don't have to be...
I'm not talking about requirements, I'm just saying make it available, it's a lot, it's so difficult for everybody to come at one o'clock in the afternoon.
I mean, whatever you said it uh, it's gonna be somebody that can't make it, so we are required to make a public notice, a public knowledge that we...
I understand that Mayor, but six or seven o'clock is a lot easier for ninety-five percent of Burnham. I guess you guys succeeded because I couldn't make it on Monday.
You trying to get an argument out of us or you won't get it?
Why do you always seem confrontational? I ask a simple question. One o'clock is like, when's the last time you guys had a meeting at one o'clock? That's basically what I was asking. If your goal was to not get the public or not let us, get us to come here, you succeeded. So I would have liked to ask a couple of questions on Monday is all. You told me I was causing trouble when I asked questions, I never thought I heard out about public official.
I mean, you could put your questions in writing, and that way we could...
You don't answer my four years, you don't answer my four years anyway, you give me legal answers saying you can't answer them.
That depends on what you have.
You said you don't keep records. How many times I've been told you don't keep records about how much we owe Cal City Plumbing or whatnot? Now John says we got uh, the only thing we owe is the police pension fund.
You missed it, the last meeting Lou said twice, we owe, we owe nobody interest, we have no interest loans, we have no loans.
No, 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 I know John, you said, you told me that.
No, but I mean Lou said it in the meeting on Monday or whatever, Lou said, whatever we were here.
But why do we pay the police pension fund last?
We pay it all the time, we're not paying as much as the actuary wants us to pay.
You haven't paid it up to date since oh five, you guys had an eight hundred thousand dollar surplus when Mayor Polk started.
You talking about the pension fund?
Talking about Burnham. All of our debt is in the pension fund, so I guess I am talking about that, that's only because you guys haven't funded it.
But if we're not committed to pay the pension fund, any amount of money, and the person, the actuary makes up what she thinks we owe. It's not what we owe or they...
I sent you a copy of the Illinois Comptroller's Office. They said that we're ten point eight million and...
And that's all the pension fund.
I understand that, but that's how, that's how far and back we are for paying the, the police...
No, it's not, we pay the pension fund, we just not paying it as much as they think we should pay it.
Are we required by law to pay the ten point eight million?
No.
No?
No.
No, that's news to me.
We are, we're required to just make good on the pensions.
John, I just appreciate this conversation here, I didn't know that.
We're obligated to make good on the pensions, which we've never defaulted on any pension. But the actuary thinks we should pay this great big amount of money that we can't even afford, we don't have the revenue to pay the amount of money that the actuary thinks we should put into it.
So when the audit and the comptroller say that the police pension fund is underfunded by that much, we're actually not in debt?
I would say we're not in debt. We're not in debt to the point where we're having to borrow money.
Can you tell, I've been asking for three years, otherwise I wouldn't be coming here. How much in debt are we?
We're only in debt to the pension fund.
How much are we in debt?
Whatever the pension fund says we're in debt, I guess we're in debt. If we are, we're not, we're only, the only indebtedness we have is them. But we're not, because we're, we're, they're worried about us having this great big surplus money, amount of money in the pension fund, in case something happens to us and these guys will get their pensions when they retire.
John, if their number isn't accurate, okay. I'm just wondering, what is the accurate number? What is our checkbook balance? I've been asking that for three years, I've asked Greer and Richardson and they referred me to a website. I was just looking for one number is all, I'm still asking for one number.
Well, we have lots of different accounts, so you kinda...
What is our checkbook balance for Burnham?
It's not just one checkbook, it's a whole bunch of different accounts though.
What's the audit for? Does that not summarize everything? Does that not bring everything full?
Yeah, it does.
Well, that says we're ten point eight million in debt.
I don't think it said, it said like six million that...
We lost two point one million from nineteen to twenty.
The state, the state said we're that much in debt, the state said way more than the audit said. The state added some years together, I think.
Mr. Polk, anything to add to that? You're in charge around here, sir, I welcome your opinion.
I've said several times, and I will repeat emphatically today, that the village of Burnham is doing well, and...
What does that mean?
You need not worry about it.
I'm not being rude, what does that mean?
So don't worry about the pension fund, just let it go.
Then why, if we're not in debt, then why did you raise our water rates in eighteen?
That has nothing to do with it.
Actually it did, you said we were underwater in the water fund. I'm trying to make sense on all this.
No, no, we were under, we're underfunded in water because our residents aren't paying the bills and we weren't accurately counting the gallons that went through the meters. So it was a combination of two items, we were accurately recording the water usage and our residents aren't paying their water bills.
I wish this made sense.
A combination of two things.
Well, you still can't tell that, what I came in here for, what is our checkbook balance for Burnham? The audits, the audit stipulates that, doesn't it? We were six million in debt two or three years ago. You guys approved the audit, then you guys say, no, the audit's not accurate.
Thereby given that pursuant to the call of the Chairman of the Finance Committee of the Village of Burnham, Cook County, Illinois, a special meeting of the Finance Committee of the Village of Burnham, Cook County, Illinois, what we had held on Thursday, June seventeen, two thousand twenty-one, at one P M at the community center located at one forty twenty, south Torrance Avenue, Burnham, Illinois, for the following purpose. The opening of the meeting to any person to address the Finance Committee of the Village of Burnham, Cook County, Illinois.
So you're making a motion?
I'm gonna make a motion that we open the meeting to the public.
There's a motion on the floor, that Trusty Cap opened it, uh, open the meeting to the public, can we have a second please? Second by Trusty Riff. Take a roll.
Roll call. Trusty Cap, yes. Trusty Greer?
Yes.
Trusty Richardson?
Yes.
And Mayor Polk, yes. Okay, so anybody have anything to talk about? Now's the time.
You wanna go first?
I'll go first, roll.
Okay, yeah, first of all, I wanna say, I gotta say that with this early starting time, it's nice not to be heckled or harassed for this meeting. Um, I watched on YouTube last meeting I came to and had one lady sitting to the right of me, one lady sitting in back of me, and I was heckled and harassed throughout the, most of the meeting, and all you guys did up here was just watched it. I watched on YouTube and so you guys did was watch, I didn't even know I was being harassed from the one on the right. I can't help but think them two were plants, directed to sit right next to me and behind me. Thanks guys, and special thanks to you, Mr. Polk. You run the things around here and you saw it, I didn't, until I saw it on YouTube. And Mr. Polk, you constantly say, you said it again here today, that uh, we ask the same questions over and over and over again, you know what, you're right. You're right, but the thing is, that's because me myself, I know I've asked the same questions over and over and over again for the past three years, and I still haven't uh, gotten an answer to some, several of them, maybe that'll change today, we'll see. John, you said about the debt, the police pension fund, why do we pay the police pension fund last? John, could you look at me when I'm talking, please?
I'm listening.
Okay.
I don't have to respond to your questions, you're just...
You're right, you're right, you guys are public servants, I would hope that would stop though. I honestly believe that Paul Cap, Greer Richardson, after seeing three years now, I honestly believe you guys don't give a darn about deficit. You, you two ladies couldn't tell me what the deficit was, you referred me to a website, and three years later here, you still haven't told me nothing here tonight, or this afternoon, sorry. Let's see, Mr. Polk, on a different subject concerning the trailer park, okay? You supplied two dumpsters to the trailer park a couple of weeks ago, I didn't know about the first one, but my neighbor Steve told me about the second one, and I text Trusty Cap, Garcia and Richardson, I'm sorry, Claybrook, I don't have your guys' texts, but I asked them if they would come out the next day and help, much like you organized it the day before. I organized it the day before, and I've heard nothing back from any of you guys. We sweated our butts off out there, we had three of us, video girl was one of them. But you guys went and planted your plants, which I'm thinking are probably dead by now because of the heat, because I don't see anybody in there watering them. You guys planted the plants, but the tenants who need help, we sweated our butts off, took out whatever garbage we could. I would appreciate at least a response from one of you guys, that's all I was even asking, if you couldn't make it, you couldn't make it. But we got nothing back from you guys. About them dumpsters though, Mayor Polk, um, who paid for them dumpsters? And how much did they cost?
The village of Burnham did not pay for them.
Okay, who did pay for them?
The village of Burnham did not pay for them.
Okay, well, very good. Can I, do you, can you tell us who did?
Don't think you have to be concerned by the taxpayer, did the taxpayer pay for it, taxpayer did not?
So you won't answer me regardless? Because I was helping with one of the dumpsters, that's why I was curious, perhaps we can get a dumpster by my house. Uh, my last point is...
Tell them it was donated, that's what it was, probably.
My last point is, Mr. Polk, you're not timing me, there's nothing in front of you. Mr. Polk and Mr. Cap, uh, I was hoping today, why don't one of you be a man today and finally start responding to some of my questions here before the meeting gets closed to the public? Do any of you think you could do that, either one of you? Trusty Cap, could you stop writing when, show some respect and look at us?
I have to keep...
You're running, you're, you're running this meeting, can you respond to any of them? I've been respectful to you guys the whole time. Can any of you guys respond to any of this?
There hasn't been one question that you stated that needed an answer from me. You're just rattling on, there's not a single question directed to me that I have to answer.
You still haven't, how much are we, how mu, you're, you're the, you've been the finance chairman...
You can see it all on the website, you can...
You've been, no, this is not, this is not on the website. You're the finance chairman for the last, what, twenty years? You were the finance chairman when Mayor Polk took over in oh five.
Twenty, you're right, twenty-four.
You guys had an eight hundred thousand dol...
All right, John, we have things...
I'm asking you.
Your time is up, your time is up.
My time, nobody's timing me here.
You're done, yes you are.
Your time is up.
You know what, you guys are lying to me because nobody has a clock in front of you.
Time is up.
And you started at one oh...
You know what, you know what, now you decide to talk.
I talk when I'm ready.
All right, we got things to do, anything else?
I just don't like being lied to, I wish you could have some answers.
That's it, time's up, anybody else have anything?
Yeah, I do.
All right, what you got?
Well, since we're on finance, uh, I don't even know what to direct it to, but uh, you gotta know that I've been trying to get curbs fixed on a hundred and forty seconds for a long time. Many times when they brought it up, I was told, well, go ahead and, did you report it? Just statements that were really ridiculous, because, you know, I know we have somebody employed that should be going around when repairs need to be done, that's gonna look at and get curbs repaired. And I tell you, it really makes me see how poor Illinois is run, not only Burnham, when I look down Torrance and I see curbs being pulled out, brand new curbs being put in, streets being put in where we have alleys, and all these improvements on the other side of town, when, you know, I can see my street deteriorating. You know, we're trying to go out there, clean up our garbage, try to go out there and clean up out of, out of alley the rocks that are there. You know, do a little effort to try to keep it clean. And uh, I don't know what to think when I see it, those curbs not getting repaired, and I have to say, is it me personally? Is it punishment to all my neighbors because I happen to speak up and those things aren't gonna be done? Or is it that uh, you know, the public work superintendent just doesn't care and he's decides just to skip those things? And uh...
I have a question, where are the curbs bad, by you or by George and Rosie's?
All through there.
Because I know they're bad by...
You go in front of Bonner's house, they're broken, all up and down, Green Bay there, that block. John, we just haven't done any curb repairs in ten years probably that I've seen where you cut the little section out.
By the way, right, maybe we've done it for a while, if we did a street, I think, right?
And hold on, I wasn't, if you guys are timing, I mean, I wasn't done yet. And, you know, I, I brought it up the one time and, you know, I was told by the mayor, oh, well, that's because, you know, it takes more because you've got that sedentary curb that, it's basically when you got a curb, then there's a, a foot, it's basically like a place for the water to run. And he didn't even realize that our side of town doesn't even have curbs like that, we just got these little blocks of curbs that are real simple to fix. I mean, I can really fix it myself, but um, if mine was the only one that was broken, I probably would fix it myself. I spent money on my own corner, I've had lines painted myself. I'm gonna have to fix my own stop sign because the addresses fell down and it was laying there for almost a week. Um, I've gotta fix that, I got no problem fixing it myself, it's just that there's so many curbs that are broken, um, that they're not getting addressed. And I'd like to hear it from the village at some point, and I'll bring it up next meeting when you have, maybe you can have an answer, because I think a lot of times, you may not get a lot of questions from us, if you would sit down and say, okay, these are the questions that these guys were asking, I'm gonna address them in the next meeting and I'm gonna shut them up. But you don't normally do that, you less bring the same questions over and over and over, and I think you could probably control a lot of this discourse that goes back and forth. And when I was here, you know, I, I, the mayor, I sent you something on a text that said, I, I would like to work with you this year. And I know you read it, and you didn't respond to me, and that was more or less a little bit of a, hey, I, I, I don't have to be, come in here and, and bitch. And you didn't send me anything, which is telling me you didn't want to do that, I wasn't sure, so I came to the meeting and I walked through that door right there, and I just stood right there. And it doesn't say no trespassing, it doesn't say this is for, it doesn't say this is for village employees only. It, this is a community center, and I'm part of this community. I don't think you have a right to tell me I can't stand back there, when other people are an employee for the village, go back there. This isn't employees only, even going back there. You know, is the water that's in this building, is the only getting to be drinking by the workers here and the officials here? How do you guys control that? And I think it becomes personal when you do things like that. I would have stood there and I would have said one thing, but I had the head right here wanting to tell you, hang over there. And then you told me to come sit down, and the only place that was left for me to sit down were right next to the two ladies that were right here. And that's fine, you bring your niece in here to challenge us in some way, that's the only thing that I could think, why she's in here. But let me tell you something, if you're trying to get me not to come to this meeting, the last thing you wanna do is have somebody hand a piece of paper up to me and keep showing it to me that says you're gonna die soon, okay? That ain't the first time she's done that, and I don't take threats from people lightly, let me tell you that right now. And the fact that I brought that up to the cop and he asked me to leave, and I went out on my own will, it's lucky I didn't drop to the ground and have four cops drag me out here, because I will do that, if I feel my civil rights are being violated, I'll do it. But the fact that he was intimidated by you, he didn't search her for that piece of paper, and I asked him to, and he didn't do it. And that's telling me that a cop went ahead and didn't search a resident who threatened another resident, and an official stood up there and watched it, man, that makes me go, holy shit, look at that, man.
All right, time up, we gotta go, we gotta go.
And that's good, John, I'm done, I'm done.
Anybody else? No? I would like to make a motion to close the meeting to the public.
That motion on the floor, by Trusty Cap, to close the meeting to the public, can we have a second please?
Second.
Second by Trusty Richardson?
Roll call, Trusty Cap, yes. Trusty Greer?
Yes.
Trusty Richardson?
Yes.
Mayor Polk?
Yes. But let me say, uh, I mean, before we proceed, uh, I'm just gonna say this briefly. We all have freedoms, and if someone have a document in their hand, I think it's unconstitutional for somebody to try to snatch it out of their hand. You don't have the right to do that. And when you do something like that, that is provocative, and I think that's what happened with that. So I don't know what was on the paper, I did not see the paper, if she did have that on the paper, then she was wrong.
She actually got it from one of your, I don't know, the panel, whatever, from one of your other...
I mean, I didn't see that, so that was wrong, that was wrong if she had that on the paper, but by the same...
I bet she bragged about it when I left, but I bragged about it to you.
By the same token, it was certainly wrong for you to try to snatch it out of the hand, you know?
Hey, I realized that it wouldn't be evidence unless I grabbed it and I was right.
I mean, she's not a child, I mean, she's not a child, so um, as far as the trailer park cleanup, I mean, we're the one that initiated that, and uh, and the uh, so we had already made our contribution there, and uh...
So that was it?
And we, we had a group of people there to... It was our program.
That was good, I was glad to hear that, I was, I was glad to hear that. I was asking you guys to go and help the rest of them, and I didn't even hear response, if they would have said, no, I can't make it, that would have been acceptable. But if I can, Mr. Polk, this is just as important. She kept on staring at me in that meeting saying, shut the F up, whispering, shut the F, you guys, you guys watched her say it. You guys watched her, I didn't, I didn't know she was doing that, I heard her whispering, but that's what she was saying, Mr. Polk, what am I supposed to do?
I mean, I never heard that.
You saw her staring at me like this, and whispering in my ears, I just heard, she already heard what she said to me.
I never heard that, um, if I had heard that, then I would have instructed her to not to do that. And if anybody comes to the meeting in the future, and if I see anybody doing something like that, then I would chest...
If I remember right, she was the one that cussed us out two years ago at the village hall too. So, so she's allowed back in here?
And so with that being said...
Yes, sir, I'm just, I'm just making a point, that's all, thank you.
That being said, going forward, then we will not have any more of that, okay?
Thank you.
All right.
So I need to go on, can I move on? The appropriation of sums of money deemed necessary to defray all the necessary expenses and liabilities of the village of Burnham for the fiscal year beginning May first, two thousand, two thousand and twenty-one, and ending April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two, and the specification of the objects and purposes for which appropriations are made and the amount appropriated for each object or purpose. So we're gonna go to water fund, you wanna come up closer?
Sure.
So we're gonna skip all the way down to legal services for special counsel? All the other ones are uh, are related to salaries and unemployment and all that other stuff. So we appropriated four thousand, you spent thirty-one hundred, so what do you wanna do this year?
Uh, like it's, I mean, it's...
Leave it the same?
Yeah, leave it the same.
We don't have a sheet of what he wants, all right, do we?
No, that's the only one that we don't, that's why, you should have another.
Yeah.
No, you should have another page.
Oh, I do have another page?
That says water.
Is that this one?
Yes, so you can fill in on that one.
Okay, second item's outside services. We budgeted two thousand and you barely spent any...
Uh, what, what exactly are outside services, what are those contain, where are those?
And we needed from, help from someone, like a contract or something specific.
Okay, yeah, no, we really didn't need much from that.
Don't I just leave that?
We could just leave that for, yeah.
We're gonna go back and change the number, we have to make an adjustment, I'm left to write the whole...
So we'll make an asterisk, that might be a place we could borrow from.
Yeah.
Professional consultant expenses, we budgeted nine thousand, spent seventy-seven hundred. So what do you wanna do with that one?
Get, get rid of it.
I wanna keep some, just...
We'll just do the minimum.
What would the minimum be, like a thousand?
Yeah.
Would they consider like going to Robinson Engineering and consulting?
No, that's, that's engineering cost, that'd be different.
They'd bring like lawyers in there to inspect your place.
That wouldn't be lawyers though, we're, we're, we were farther down. Professional consultant expenses. Oh, that's the one, just the office supply, fifteen hundred, you spent almost four grand. What do you wanna do with that one?
You could, you could lower that one down, um, we had to move it to the office.
I meant for Mr. Lewis came in, right?
No, office supply, not office...
Oh, I'm done with, I'm sorry.
Did you buy, did you buy something in particular that you need, and we won't have to repeat?
I know we had a, we, we had a printer, uh, when, when I first started, we got a, a new laptop, but I'm trying to, I'm trying to think of what...
We just checked, it might have been a... About a mix of so...
I mean, I'm not talking about anything, why do we have other discussions on a...
So what, what are we gonna do with that one? Fifteen hundred, we'll just leave it?
We're gonna go back to the...
We'll recheck that, let's put a question up.
Postage and printing, fifteen thousand, you didn't use any of it?
Well, I think, um, something should have gone through that because we divided by departments, so I'm sure that has to fit with that.
You might have put it back two months later.
Two, no, you use a lot of postage. But it's, the postage includes the utility buildings that go out.
If the...
Do you wanna put a note there too, question mark, go back to it? Natural gas expense, thousand bucks. You only spent two hundred and fifty-two.
Probably leave it, right, because I mean, I believe the generator should be the backup pump.
So leave that one?
Yeah.
Electric expense, nine thousand, we spent eighty-one hundred, leave it? Vehicle purchase? We budgeted five hundred, didn't use any of it, to just leave it?
Yeah.
Vehicle maintenance, two thousand, we spent a hundred, um, I'm sorry, we spent thirty-two hundred.
Wait, you said vehicle repair and maintenance, right?
Spend thirty-two hundred.
Thirty-two hundred, okay, so we spent a little over, I mean, I, the van is getting a little bit older, seven now.
Do you wanna go up to three grand? For an extra, thirty-five hundred or what?
Probably thirty-five, right?
Yeah.
Okay, equipment, equipment maintenance? Two thousand, spent fourteen hundred, leave it?
That should be fine.
Phone, internet?
That should be fine.
Security alarm, five hundred?
Uh, we did discuss adding some more cameras to the pump station, I don't know if we're still wanting to do that. We did, I did show the mayor that, I think some kids or something, we're throwing some rocks at the back of the tank, found a bunch of rocks back there and some little, little vents, but, you know, going from rocks to graffiti, you know?
How much would cameras cost?
We probably only need about three more, right, I think that's uh, eight, that system covers eight that we use.
Yeah, yeah, we got three more we can use.
So you have room for three more?
Um, I think when me and Jeff were out there, uh, we only needed to get one more, and if we did like a, figure what they call it, like orbital, it's like it'll get like the whole back area and it'll get the side area where there's some blind spots, so, I think we would only need one, but if we...
I need a cost though, you have to...
We don't, we don't have a cost yet.
What do we know from stuff around here? Brendan, how much do cameras cost?
Wait a minute, wasn't that covered under the, um, um...
Cares money?
There you go.
We did put that in there, did we? Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so, I think we don't have to do anything.
Let's just leave this one.
Cares money.
Gas and oil. Five thousand, spent just over five thousand. So obviously we need to go up, gas prices went up.
Maybe, you know. Six, six?
All right, six is good. Water line maintenance, twenty thousand, we spent fourteen thousand.
Uh, water line maintenance, are we talking the water maintenance?
We have a main, yeah.
Okay, yeah, that should be fine.
Water pump maintenance?
Uh, that should be fine.
We, we budgeted five thousand, you spent thirty-one something?
Yeah, yeah, that should be fine. We do a lot of our own...
And safety apparel? We budgeted two hundred, you spent a thousand. I would say you're okay.
Yeah, we're fine, we're fine.
I T purchases? That's your camera system stuff?
I know.
Oh, that's the software? Oh, that's the software for the building?
No, the computer.
Oh, that's.
It would be like labor.
Okay, right.
What's that?
That was a computer?
Like a, like a, like maintenance to a, for maintenance storm, like from Jeff and them?
No, we replaced it.
Did we replace one last year?
A laptop?
Computer, no.
Yeah, the laptop.
Last year, no.
Was it your printer?
We did get a new printer last year.
Cause that's, it's probably.
That might be it.
So we'll leave that at five hundred? Yeah?
Yeah, that's fine.
Small equipment purchases, thousand. You spent forty-five hundred.
Yeah, we had to do some, uh, some purchasing with that. There was a lot of things that we had to get in order to, uh, you know, keep things rolling with maintenance.
So what do you wanna do?
It should go down. Um, we got most of the equipment that we need now, so.
So we wanna leave the thousand, okay?
Yeah.
Building repairs and maintenance, two thousand. We spent thirteen hundred. We talked the other day, but your roof is okay, right?
My roof is fine. I don't see any issues. When I got on the tower, I didn't see anything going on up there. Um, mayor and I were talking the other day regarding, um, maybe getting some floor in the office area. And we were also thinking, cause the, the paint's chipping in the pump room. Um, so, so maybe we might wanna raise, uh, the budget just a little bit for, for those expenses. Uh, there's asbestos tile in the office pump room, or in the, in the office of the pump station. And there's tile that are just, it's just getting all ripped up.
So you can't just go over it? You have to, it's gonna have to be pulled out? It's gonna have to be evaded or no?
We could, we could probably go over it depending on the materials we, we used or whatever, yeah.
That floor, something happened to it was loose though. I don't think you could ever go over that.
The wood floor, no. The tile floor, maybe.
Cause it's big money.
Yeah, I would say a good four and three. Yeah, about fifteen hundred and.
depreciation expense, we had a thousand, didn't spend any. What do you wanna do? Just leave it?
I'm sorry, what did we say for building repair and maintenance?
We went to three thousand. Depreciation expense must've been something to do when we put that, those pumps and stuff in a torrent, I would bet.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not exactly sure what that.
Probably lower that, right? Go to five hundred? Okay. Contingencies, you have fifteen hundred. Spent thirteen hundred, so just leave it?
Yeah.
Purchase of water, we budgeted seven hundred thousand. We only spent five hundred and thirty-eight thousand.
Would you remember you was making a point about because we put in the new water meters, they're in the hole?
Uh, yeah, the new water meters, uh, so we've, you know, that helped and that contributed and also, uh, fixing a lot of leaks. We, we got a lot of leaks fixed in our, in our veins.
So you want, where you wanna go? You wanna go down six hundred thousand? You wanna?
Well.
No.
It might wanna stay the same, right, mayor? I mean.
We probably should leave it by.
Just in case.
Yeah.
Okay. Kell City Water Transfer expense, we budgeted twenty and spent twenty-seven thousand.
You can take it if they're in there.
Okay. Equipment purchase, meters, pumps and seals, fifteen thousand. We only spent sixteen hundred.
That's cause of the meter project.
Then obviously we could lower that now.
Yeah.
Where do you wanna go?
Well, it depends on the warranty from, uh, um, Kell City Pumping and how much they're gonna be covering when meters need to be replaced or broken and what have you.
Do you wanna go five thousand, ten thousand?
Yeah, five, ten, both kind of.
Ten, with ten?
Okay.
Uh, water quality testing, ten thousand. We spent seventy-eight hundred. Leave it?
Yeah. I'm gonna be doing more of that. Uh, we got a lot more information after the meter project where I'm able to tell what, uh, lines are lead lines. Um, so when we do some shut offs, we'll be able to test their lines after we shut them off and water's been sitting in the lead lines. We'll be able to test that water and make sure that the water is suitable for drinking. So we might, uh, we may even wanna increase it maybe a couple thousand if you guys are okay with that.
Maintenance to fire hydrants, ten thousand. We spent sixty-five hundred.
So B-box and valve maintenance and hydrant and fire hydrants. Um, right now, what we wanna do is we wanna exercise the valves that are in the streets. Um, because we wanna do some more repairs on the hydrants. And we also want to, uh, make sure that if, say a hydrant doesn't close, that we don't have water spraying everywhere, or if we have a main break, we're able to, um, fix that main break. So we wanna get those valves exercised. Um, and we're gonna be, what the plan is, is what we plan on doing, um, is getting these valves fixed, flushing these hydrants. And right now, we're focusing on the west side, cause we've already done the east side of town. Um, so we want to make sure that we're just taking the proper steps and, uh, so I would think we would need to add a little more to the B-box and valves area. I'm not, see, once we, once we start flushing, that's when the fire hydrants could break. Or we find out that there's something wrong with them and we need to repair them. So we may wanna increase, um, fire hydrants just in case. And we may wanna increase, well, we will wanna increase, um, B-box and valves, yeah. And, and the, the estimate for the valve exercising, I believe is like forty-five hundred to five grand, I guess, I think you guys exactly if you want to. But, um.
Is the fire hydrant fixed over there at Hundred Forty-second in Mackinac?
Yes.
Yeah, it's fixed now. Good. Cause it had a spring on it for a while, right? A light ring?
Yeah, that one, that one I just, I, it had a bunch of different little things in the fire department actually accidentally. Little too fast and snapped on.
Oh, so they broke it after Kell City Pumping fixed it? I know it was fixed sometime.
Yep.
So you.
But they, it was Kell City fixed the seat on the bottom the first time.
So do we wanna, fire hydrants go to what? From ten thousand to what?
Hundred.
I think like, uh.
Fifteen thousand?
You could go to fifteen thousand. I think that would suit them all.
You have to be careful that when they do that work that you noted correctly, which one was fire hydrants and which was B-box. Guys, only bill you have a bill separate and not group them on one bill?
Gotcha.
Otherwise we'll have trouble when we go to pay them, right?
Another thing too with the, uh, when we're exercising the valves is we'll get a, uh, Emmy Simpson's gonna be helping and they'll help label, uh, the maps or the, the map of the CIS system where we can, uh, in the future, when we get a little bit more technologically involved, um, with the pump station, uh, we'll have GPS system and everything like that. So that's a, it's a nice little perk we'll be, uh, exercising.
So on the B-box, then we budgeted thirty thousand, but spent fifty-two, but some of that was cause we had to shut the water off and change meters, right?
Right.
But do you think that would continue to go up or would it be less now? You think you could get valves working and not spend more than thirty thousand?
It depends on the shut offs. Um, if we have a lot of shut offs, uh, we'll find a lot of broken B-boxes. You know, people hit those things with, uh, with, with, with lawn mowers and, uh, some of them are just, we have an older infrastructure, so some of them are rusty, some of them won't move, some of, some of them spin, some of them whatever. And, uh, and, uh, you know, uh, we need CCPs assistance on those. So it really depends on, but we'll say it depends on the residents and the painter bills.
Mine isn't handling too. We can't find mine. Mine, I kinda know where it is, but.
Yeah, yeah.
So, okay, so you, what do you wanna go to? From thirty thousand to what?
I think it could probably stay the same. What would you think, Louis? You think at another ten?
A little forty?
Okay.
Okay. The water meter replacement, we s- budgeted during the seventy-seven and we spent two hundred and twenty-one.
Um, yeah, that is not okay. Um, maybe. All those, I guess, um, yeah, just.
That's.
Yeah, on September, we just. Okay, and before we go, uh, before we go anything else, uh, um, I mean, kind of concerned we have a day that the, uh, the generator. So, um, I would like to suggest, right, if you can try to get a generator, I mean, I would, let me make an assessment of the situation out there.
Okay.
Yeah.
I do believe it's, uh, so we got a battery that's on the, uh, on the, on the pump itself. Um, there is a battery maintainer charger on it as well. Uh, we had alternative energy solutions come out about two weeks prior. So the generator malfunctioning. Um, they could, they got it fired up and everything was working, but I think when they were firing it up, I think something shorted with the, uh, with the battery charger. And the battery charger light is the green and it, you know, that's our indicator that, you know, the battery is fine. Um, we do do manual tests on it as well, but the AES guys were just out there, so you know, we were just going off to recharge it.
Did they leave it in the wrong mode maybe?
No, no, it's, it's only got one mode. It's just, uh, even when you turn it off now, the green light stays on. So I think there's something wrong with the charger and the maintainer. And, you know, by the time we were able to get it out there, pressure dropped. Um, but yeah, we can, we can have an inspection done if you'd like.
Oh, we definitely need one.
Well, well, yeah, we, uh, I did have alternative energy coming back out, but if you, you want, you said Generac you wanted? Generac coming out, we'll have Generac come out. Um.
Is that the generators?
Old chamber outlets.
Every department got a brand new generator except for it is the most important, not all of them. Don't let them cut your budget too much. Everybody else's budget, mine's getting cut, but you're seeing it over.
See you, Jared.
Bullshit.
Take care. Take care.
See you, Johnny.
We're not recording. Alright, bye. I thought you said bye.
You, all you saying bye to YouTube. Don't wanna leave you left out?
Okay, so we're, yeah, you definitely have them come out. Have somebody come out.
Well, it, it starts up now. I got it. I got, I got a new battery in there and it's starting right up, so.
And they were okay.
But we could still have it. Get a quote to see maybe if you want to.
Yeah, we'll come to my house and fix mine.
You have been asking that we should look into buying any generators. So, I mean.
Something else that could've helped prevent that as well.
What if we get some more CAREPAC money? It's not appropriated.
Some things that could also help with that as well is, uh, improving the SCADA system to where the SCADA system would, uh, contact me if there's low pressure. And, you know, as soon as you get them low pressures and something like that happens, I mean, it's, you gotta get there, you know, you gotta get there fast. So if, uh, we were able to, um, work with the SCADA system just a little bit, um, and maybe, maybe have the SCADA system call my cell phone, um, we might be able to alleviate, uh, potential boil order problem, you know? So it's something we can look into and maybe even add into the appropriations if you'd like, something to go over.
Well, now's the time.
Yeah, which one?
Did we put enough money?
I don't have any quotes. I don't have, this is just me.
But you do have money for maintenance. Right?
Yeah, it doesn't have, I mean.
Brendan, is that why the boil order came out?
Yeah.
I didn't, we were never told. I was just curious.
You weren't told?
Just, just told the boil order.
It was a code red.
We were never told why. Why would you have a boil order?
Well, we did.
Did a main break? I was just curious.
No, 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 because we had no electricity.
Yeah, electricity went out.
No water pressure.
The low one was the reason why the boil order was the main one, right? Isn't that why?
Low water pressure, low water pressure, cause the power went out?
Right, and then the generator. Yeah, the, the pressure dropped a low twenty PSI, uh, in our main lines. Um, and when that happens, you, you know, you have to issue a boil order.
Okay.
According to EPA. Um, we, we put out, we put out those, did you see the big orange boil order signs?
Yeah.
Okay, we had those. We did the code red and we put it on the website. Um, the EPA requires us to do those three things, um, and, and that's, uh, you know, do three forms of getting it out to the public and, and they're, they're okay with that. Um, I do know that we're still working on the code red, correct? You know, making sure to get a lot of people. I, I've gotten a lot of people saying, yeah, it was great. They told us right away. And then I had a few of our other residents say, well, you know, I used my home phone, so I didn't really get anything. So.
Well, see, the other side of that coin, I know several people that have the home phone, me, me included. I got one. But if you had a cell phone, I was telling people who had a cell phone, none of them knew about it.
Really?
It wasn't with the clerk's office. The number was, I don't know. I just know I got it and I didn't even need it.
When we last said, when people signed up, you know, when we said notice, uh, we would.
Yeah, yeah, maybe we should.
Alright, we going to sewer next? Change hats or whatever, flip sheets over.
As far as the meters go, how long do we have a warranty for the meters?
Twenty years.
Twenty years.
Really? Does that cover everything? In case something happens? Anybody's meter?
Well, that covers, um, it doesn't cover if you break it yourself.
Okay, that's a good thing.
You know.
If you go two of the MXU.
Right, but if there's a malfunction.
There's stuff you had to think about.
Yeah, so it, uh.
Dealing with people.
Yes, sir.
Alright, so we'll.
Okay.
Let's go down to electric, electric expense, fifteen hundred. We somehow didn't.
Because it's on the same building.
Yeah.
Oh, wait, no.
It does have a separate meter, doesn't it?
Mm-hmm, yeah, yes.
Wanna make a note, we need to do a better job with that one. Code that one to the right department. It might come on the same bill as something else, right?
It, it does. There's a, it's a, it's in a, like a main one and then it appears, you know, branches out.
So we'll leave that for now. Contingencies, we'll leave that for now. Sewer infrastructure maintenance, we budgeted thirty and spent thirty-two. So what do you wanna do with that one?
Well, so if you go down a few lines, you go to sewer line maintenance. Um, we've been, uh, doing, um, the flushing. Um, like we just started on the east side of town. Um, what we have kinda come up with is that we would do like a five-year plan. Every five years, we would come back to a, a specific beat of ti- uh, the town, which we have five beats in the town. Um, so, um, I would think that that number would come down, um, once we were able to fix and flush that infrastructure out, we would have less problems. Um.
So we'll leave it at thirty or go down?
I would say leave it the same now until we see how, how it works out when we start doing a lot of the flushing.
Okay. So lift stage and maintenance, twenty-seven thousand and we didn't spend anything. What do we need to do there?
We need another building now, uh.
Our pump's okay?
Yeah, pump's okay, uh. Uh, we got, uh, we put in for a grant. We don't know, we don't know, we don't know where it is yet, so.
So if you needed to, could you do a building for twenty-seven thousand or no?
No, the building, well, if we get the grant, there will not be another building. The building will be torn down and it will be caged in with some type of structure, but it would not be a building going forward.
Okay. Would it be underground like an vault?
Yeah, something like that, yeah.
So what are you gonna do with the twenty-seven thousand? Lower it?
We can lower it to maybe, maybe ten.
Okay. Sewer line maintenance, we budgeted fifty thousand, spent a hundred and twenty thousand. That's part of that flushing we're doing in there?
Mm-hmm.
But what are we doing forward? Do we need to go up?
Yeah, well, hmm, I'm not gonna get any valves, not really, so.
I mean, once we clean them all, but we're the.
See, once, yeah, once right now.
Starting somewhere else, right?
Yeah, so as of right now, it takes a little more to get them cleaned because they haven't been done in such a long. Yeah, so, as of right now, it takes a little more to get them cleaned because they haven't been done in such a long time. Um, but as time moves on, in, in the long term, um, we would hope that that number would go down.
So, you, where do you wanna go?
I would say, I would say go up, right?
So, you wanna go to one thirty, one forty, one fifty, what?
Say one thirty.
Okay. Inspection fees, twenty-five hundred, we didn't use any.
Are you gonna use it for major?
I don't know, um, we, uh, we actually used Kell City Plumbing to check out our.
They were working there today too, but like.
Kell City Plumbing?
Somebody was there, something was going on there.
Um.
Are they the same?
Did we have any, did we get a bill from Kell City Plumbing for, um, I mean, I don't think, I didn't see anything.
So, just leave it?
Yeah.
And then, EPA expense, fifteen hundred, we only spent a thousand.
Yeah, that should be fine.
Leave it fifteen hundred? Okay. Are, is anything else coming today?
Yeah.
The way it should be coming. Yeah, I don't think we need to blow or make stuff, right? You got the tier.
Right, so I, we need to say whatever, have a word with them. Is, um, been coming in?
Alright, is that all?
Yeah, you go with the higher.
Alright, thanks, man.
It went way over, huh?
Brandon, you brought up all that.
Oh, thank you.
Sounds good.
It's not over.
We're waiting for public votes.
Should I stop it?
Yeah.
Remember, yeah, oh, maybe. But it's the same, it's the same figures, it, it's the same amount, so the fire department appropriated the same as last year, this fiscal year.
Okay. So, we'll skip all the way down to that Medicare for Fire Department, that stayed the same. Legal services, that one stayed the same.
I see.
But fire services contracted, six thousand, he spent eight thousand. He had it stay the same.
Yeah. The only thing that thought that was the EMS equipment and stuff, like that.
Well, the only thing that changed? I thought it also, so we can kinda just skip through them all the way to there? Or you wanna go through them one at a time?
It's up to you.
Well, even this natural gas, we budgeted thirteen hundred, spent sixteen hundred, but he said leave it the same. What's he doing there? You gotta at least go up on your natural gas, right?
I guess they're gonna be more conscious about, like.
Let's make it fifteen then.
Yeah, we, we need to, we need to probably look at those, we need.
Oh, yeah, something better make it two thousand, right?
But you're throwing up your budget then?
Yeah. Right, but it's okay.
Okay.
Because.
We're going to.
One for two. Or just look at all the ones that he was so far under, that are over.
And he, he wanted it the same, I mean, this is what.
I'm sure he did more than he could, so, alright, so the next one is his phone service. We budgeted seven thousand, we spent almost ninety-two hundred, and he said leave it the same.
Because we're working on that new, though, remember, man, with all the service, with all the buildings.
Yeah, well, yes, um, I want this taken, made a pass, and if you play that, make that.
Alright.
You know, I need to already do that.
Yeah.
Say eight pass?
Yes, for the phone. The other one's small equipment, that's okay, I guess the rest were okay, it was just those few. Right, everybody, everything else he was under. No, except for the EMS equipment and supplies.
That's why you switched them.
Oh, he went, he switched them?
Right, yeah.
Now we went down. EMS equipment and supplies.
Because they purchased what they need to, they have purchased items, so they're going to do that again, right?
Oh, that's. Good with that. Okay, not good with that, except for the couple of changes we made. Right, we made the two changes. Alright. Police, I'll talk to them. And he's on his way. Work out, probably works, probably don't without it. I don't have the water, the guard was taking care of. So, I got free time. Bonnie was gonna come because she has a couple more plans, but then she decided to put them in the end and restart. She was in some store that had plants on flowers. Yes, they have them going there? They were like a buck or something.
Did you guys get a new sprinklers and something?
They did?
They still use sprinklers? For the garden, the whole, or the whole hole?
That was over the way through, right? Yeah. I brought my old hose, Leo gave me his old hose. Leo Pooles, that's the longest. You know, the hose would survive if somebody was to run right over the connection between the two of them, right? Cause Leo's looks like a plastic one, you know, like the, with this red side.
Yeah.
So, somebody runs over there.
Real break.
Go up, you want me to stop?
Your number's a little bit too, you're up ten percent. To legal services again, special counsel, right?
All of this one.
Me. Must have had a. So, you can still pay like that three thousand.
Oh, yeah. We keep it the same.
Keep it three thousand?
Last.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
The next one, natural gas. Forty-five hundred, leave the same.
Keep it the same.
Next item, electric, ten grand.
You have a sheet right here on the heat number.
I know, but we need to go over it because he's still, he's over ten.
Oh, that's.
He's over ten, so I, I, I'll get it. What he like this? Because he's being charged to everybody's electric problem.
Right.
And then traffic lights too.
Well, that was a different, I, I, but yeah, the coverboard's just trying to go, like all the outside, right?
So, you went to forty, okay. Next one, machinery. We budgeted five thousand, we used nineteen hundred, and now you're asking for ten, so, what do you wanna buy?
Maybe we could trade one of the, we do a turn on, it works, you know, it works pretty good on open fields. So, they can maybe get it. See if we can trade one of them.
Okay.
Number two, just take other cars? Um, we wanted, uh, bags.
Four thousand, some five thousand.
Well, we got the ones with the, they have bags, get a couple of them, leaves.
We went lowest one, eight, eight and a half. Okay. Vehicle purchase, budget thirty, setting the volume to fifteen.
Yeah, we'll, we'll keep up the, uh, we gotta make the trucking gas, just, uh, make sure that maybe they step up on it. And, uh, maybe redo some of the clouds on the new truck, it's, the cloud's kinda, kinda huge, so we'd like to see it just go smaller cloud.
So, vehicle repair maintenance, twenty-five thousand, you spent sixty-one thousand.
Vehicle repair.
Do you wanna go to fifteen thousand? Uh, yeah.
Had to get their work, do you know, need front end over?
So, you wanna go fifty?
We're going for fifty.
Equipment maintenance, five thousand. Spent twenty-three hundred, fifteen, and then five thousand.
We keep it the same.
Street traffic signal maintenance, forty-five, you spent sixteen hundred, fifteen thousand, might go to thirty.
Go to thirty.
Can't go a little lower than thirty.
We can go down maybe. But if she had to change something, she would not go for the whole budget.
I mean, we need to make twenty.
We can make twenty-five.
Yeah, that's, we need to make some changes here now.
Wanna make twenty-five?
Yeah. We need to make some changes here now. Sure as banister police. Vehicle site.
Bad police.
Yeah. He's up eleven and a half.
Yeah.
You're up like ten.
They're working, 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 the machines are running.
I'm, I'm gonna have, have you start using hand tools.
Oh, my God.
How many shovels can we buy for thirty thousand?
Should we buy some livestock or something, something to go with?
Oh, yeah, yeah, we can get some cattle, horses.
Justy, I think we do pretty good.
Alright, so. Less maintenance on a horse or a cow.
Village sites, right?
Thousand, he left it a thousand, I, no, 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 no. Went up to ten thousand.
Oh, what, what, what's it gonna say?
Little excitement improvements.
Like sites in the village.
Right, right.
Right.
I know we're gonna cut the budget, you jack it up, what are you spending, ten thousand? I don't see.
Well.
Village sites improvements, we budgeted a thousand, you didn't spend any this, next year, you're asking for ten thousand.
No, those sites improvement?
Yeah.
I don't think I put anything.
Yeah, you put ten thousand, maybe that's.
Sometimes did I add an extra zero?
Yeah, maybe that's, yeah, that makes sense.
That would happen.
Yeah. That makes a lot better, so leave that a thousand.
And then you wanna do?
And you get to keep one, you know, with a molder. Five thousand, repairs and maintenance to the senior center.
Okay, on that, we probably really need to go ahead and take care of that downstairs.
Yes.
Great, and justy.
Absolutely.
We need to.
What's wrong?
Needs a new, you know, wall, we need to get some vents in there because from, uh, from the pipes being in the wall like that, and they expose, they keep bursting and we get subzero weather. No, we didn't have a bomb blast on the one, or that. Well, that's cause we cut the, the water line off.
Can't you wrap on the insulation or something, help them?
Yeah, we got a map.
They're wrapped now?
Yeah. And we also, uh, structure the building, if you look up at the top of it, you know, some bricks or. We need to do that.
Close the door.
Is that the main door, the front door we're going?
Yeah, yeah. And just go.
The street level.
So, if we get two poles, you don't have to.
So. So, from five thousand, you wanna go to fifteen?
Yeah.
Okay. Already saved me a nine thousand, anyway. Phone and cable. No.
Do us, do we want to do it?
I don't wanna mess with those field doors, you almost have to weld when you do them. I did a bunch of labor work yesterday, by the way, I'll tell you later. Those were in my car while making stuff. Phone and cable, twenty-seven hundred, you spent forty-one hundred, would you change it? Five grand.
Everybody goes. I mean, that would be part of the phone system too, right?
Right.
Cable, you simply make that one out altogether.
Well, cause it's with the phone and the cable on, on, on the, yeah.
Who's in membership, that's okay.
Yeah, we keep that the same.
Call it, you go the same, but then you take the. If, you have another page, every bunch you have two pages to this, or have, was it already in there?
You'll see where it went, you went up to five thousand.
Okay.
Yeah. Subzero was okay.
Yeah, we can't say.
Apparel was okay.
Definitely.
That was okay. That was okay.
Do you have telephone, okay?
Yeah. Say apparel, apparel is spelled wrong, right? The word apparel.
We had a couple of cables, that was what.
Yes, I do, I would like to do that for the traffic signs.
What are you talking about, justy?
The traffic signs.
What's that?
Traffic sign, it sounds.
Traffic sign?
We're not even there yet.
Oh, okay. Attention.
Right, I mean.
Divorces.
She skipped to the bottom, please. You woman, God. She skipped, she skipped to the bottom. So, where we at, we were gasoline, we passed that, right? We're okay with gasoline, you went to health?
I think you went to apparel.
No, exactly.
Right, apparel, one sheet is spelled wrong, one sheet is spelled, right? Safety apparel, you're okay. IT purchases, you're not okay.
Cause we, that one, we certainly bought the desktop for our office, we don't have to buy another.
Are you okay now? Small equipment, you're okay, yeah. Building repairs and maintenance, see, this is another bill, that's a different place. Twenty-two, we spent six thousand. Okay, traffic sign expense. Okay. Okay, alright, you're part.
The one you're talking about, justy, traffic signs.
Yes, traffic signs, yes, uh, I, which we do, purchase some signs and drive through here, you know, you're like, it's, uh, well, there's two different signs that I was interested in, a lot of people driving through, how driving fast, our children are playing, you drive like your children are playing here. Something with that.
Something like we have over there by the school.
Yes, so, yes, so we need something, oh, in, in our areas. So, I want to see a best.
We're looking to something.
Hey, by the way, did the mayor tell you about the street sign, one hundred and forty-second Green Bay? Sign fell off the top of the pole, he found you or no?
Was it, was it by Gary's house?
Gary said something today about he would fix it, but I sent a message to the mayor, but not to you.
I'll take it.
It looks like the screws came, you said the top, like, uh, whatever holds the thing at the top fell off.
I got a graffiti, it was something.
No, 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 it looks like the.
Was it a graffiti on the top side? The graffiti on the stop sign?
The street sign, the top fell off.
Yeah, we, I'll take it.
You know, like the little cross thing that holds the cross sign, and it rustled out.
I say Green Bay?
Hundred forty-second Green Bay, right by the church, that one fell off. I walked by it a bunch of times without saying anything, and then he sent me the picture of how you guys cleaned up the stop sign by entry? And then I said, oh, I got another one now, this street sign by Jerry's, the top fell off.
That needs to be not even.
It has like a screw or something, right, that holds it on the top of the pole?
Screws are holding.
Looks like.
Bracket.
The whole bracket looks good too, it looks like it just came loose and fell off or something. And I walked by it several times and didn't say anything, and then he brought it up today, by the way. Alright, so maintenance and street lights? Okay, so we add five thousand, alley and street maintenance, we're adding that one, five thousand.
Right, right.
Uh, tree stump re, okay, replace.
That will go to MFT, wouldn't it?
Yeah, but we still have to add it.
No, yes, oh.
Right, tree stump, we're gonna replace the third new one.
Yes, yeah, yeah. Because what doesn't, so you know how we have the budget that we do at MFT? We can't, if we go over it, then it has to go to another, and it would go under your apartment.
Okay.
No, I think we gotta turn it around, not in the residential area, so, but that would, I don't have to.
The difference, so like, MFT, tree, tree, and stump would be the amount that this budget for that MFT? And then whatever is in excess, go under this line item.
Okay, that was the line, correct, I'm sure.
Correct, yes.
So we have to adjust the, so.
So that would, what would we wanna make that?
I appreciate it for that, so.
Not for the MFT, for the aspect access to the MFT?
Right, you said MFT, actually, maybe it's not, it's, 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 yeah, yeah, yeah. So this, uh, 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 I think, I'm pretty sure, if you check.
So then what would you like placed there for, for this time, this, this stump?
So on the new sheet, you have to add that third new one, right?
Yes, I do.
Landscaping, beautification, ten grand, spent seventy-two, leave it at ten. Bacon property, ten grand, we spent eighty-seven, leave it at ten. Animal control, three thousand, spent seventy, I don't think it's a, uh. Arctic business disposal, two thousand, we spent eight thousand.
Yeah, the, uh, electronic waste, dead.
What, that part, I think?
So when I worked last week for Will Davis, in his electronic turn-in, does he have to pay that? Or does the county charge you for that? Like, the county sent that big truck to take all that stuff away?
We did it through homework when they want.
Oh, see, they do it through the county, the township, use the county sheriff. And Will Davis used the county sheriff, so if we ever use that again, we should probably use the sheriff. Cause the sheriff has a truck, and they tape all that stuff to the jail. Somebody said that, something, right after that happened, somebody at the jail made purchases on their credit card. Right? But Carmelo, is that something right?
I, I didn't hear that story, but, uh, those guys are very, uh.
They bring out containers?
Yeah, they bring out, they bring out.
Giving containers?
They brought out those big cardboard bins, and they loaded them in the trucks as we filled them, but the, I don't, so that's, the county does that, right? So if we ever do it again, make sure we contact the county.
I know, it's, it's.
Another thing, with, uh, with the waste disposal, we cleaned out the, uh, the store. In the store, we have a couple documents.
Before we leave, couple words, uh, how we done?
Well, the garbage is a question, do we really need to go to eight thousand? Maybe not.
Like, is that off it?
Yeah, we spent.
We spent, we budgeted two, spent eight, but if we use the county for electronics, maybe we don't need to go to eight. Right, can we go down?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, we cleaned out the, the store.
So maybe let's not go to eight. Wanna go to what? Brandon said he was a little nervous when he was here. He thought he was on the hot seat, he was in the same seat you were, all but because John and Jerry were here, I'm sure that's.
That's his brother.
He said he was nervous. So we're not gonna go to eight on that one, we're gonna go to, go to five or something.
I think five would be okay.
I'm trying to find a little money.
We have to go back, so I need to steal some. Summer team.
Contingencies, like contingencies, we were at two thousand, we went down to a thousand. Okay, so what, what are you missing out?
Summer park time.
Summer park time, so.
Where's that at?
Like, five, six.
Oh.
Four. We will probably, uh, we might do that empty as a month, put in ten or twelve, just to have the, uh, uh, you know, go there.
This summer or next summer, man?
Next summer.
Oh.
So just go.
This is for up to the, for third and seventh night chair?
Let's, let's start.
Summer park time.
So let's leave that.
So summer park time?
Yeah, yeah, let's.
That's okay, for, uh, that's, I don't.
The goal is for next summer, so we're not, we don't, next summer.
So we had a thousand in, then we'll leave it a thousand?
Yeah.
Okay.
Right, is that your mention?
Yeah.
Alright, I'm good then. So we made a few, couple changes. Eleven percent increase. Alright, I'm good, everybody doing any other questions? Nick's gonna relook at this, he'll get back to me one day.
So we're nice for it?
Next, now we'll let him do it. I, I, I'll, I'll come see. He's gonna work on it now, but we're not actually leaving. So can I make a motion, both of me?
So we're done with things like the police?
No, we did police, but we had to relook at a couple things. We'll say we're done with police, but I told me needs to look at a couple.
Second, second option, second?
Second? Second?
Trusty Cat?
Yes.
Trusty Richardson?
Yes.
Trusty Clear? And your call?
Okay, I'm okay.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
So who would you add to the stuff?
I don't know, I had market already.
Yeah, but you were not, that was.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's all, yeah, okay.
Do you, do you work far from him or?
And you're gonna look at the street sign in your way, get it over there?
Uh, yeah, alright.